No, why are we sitting in the dark? Thanks God. What's Willie doing tonight?
Speaking Florida.
Is he? I didn't even know that.
He got a emergency call to do some woodworking.
Oh. Okay. We are. We just, I just turned on.
So these are hot.
No. Dawn, did you turn on the speakers? Okay, they are. Yes, they are then. Maybe the battery is dead.
Hey Rachel.
Yes.
This iPad's showing that it needs updating, but then when I do the, my passcode, it says incorrect.
Um.
It goes, it goes, the iTunes app goes through Tim's old cellphone number.
We have a password that should work. We can work on it when we get done. We've switched it from that old cellphone number, yeah. Where's Scott go?
Online.
We are. But let's wait for, there he is.
It is 4:30 and we'll have a call order. A couple minutes of silence please. Thank you. Rachel?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll call it night. I'm going to start with Craig. I'm being here for a special meeting tonight. I'm just trying to ask for a little bit of each one here to determine the course from start to end.
Jay Davis here.
Steven here.
Jeff Ab here.
Bob Jones is online, I think.
I don't see him yet.
Well, just a second. We've got a quorum, but if we can get Bob Jones down, we'll vacation him.
How are you guys? We're good now. I don't see Bob Jones yet.
We do have a quorum. The person I'd like to do is give an motion to amend the agenda to receive a resolution of counsel to perjury. I have a motion please.
Actually. Bob's, Bob's on. I believe.
Okay, he said he's on the line?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to amend the agenda. We'll not call a vote. Dawn will choose.
Okay. Steve Denny?
Yes.
Shane Davis?
Yes.
Robert Jones?
He just fell off.
Okay. Jeff Ab?
Yes.
No.
I didn't get anything from him.
Let's do that.
Did you hear the motion to amend the agenda, Bob?
Bob, did you hear the motion to amend the agenda?
The, uh, the, uh, the.
There's a motion to amend the agenda to accept that justification for the nation.
That's okay. Okay.
Okay, Robert Jones?
Hi.
Thank you.
So, uh, what I can do is, uh, maybe a pump up and all, so that I have seen releasing a name, I have such a name, yes, yes. As a guest video, I see today. This is, this is what we have.
It is on.
Turn it off. Why this war? Should I get correct, uh, study the days that the Congress was reading and appoint someone to her position. She is a hard station, so the public, it's by town, but the Republican party.
That's correct. Okay.
Any questions and comments? Okay. So we're going to do a new list. About hearing, according to normal, it's strange, I'm making all these charges for telling us Texas, we're waiting for the child, more so for the stop. You're explaining this as we're.
Okay, so, um, what we're doing here is previously, we had some charges that were mostly, were introduced around 20 years ago. That the town, electrical order employees, the street work employees, if they had to do some work, well, they had to pay our, uh, electrical or private do that. This is that, uh, that, uh, day. In the meantime, we also, uh, it would be a good idea to go have a, have everybody else at town fully if that situation arises. I think a good example would we, we develop the cops to town, uh, fire chief spends time going over things that are maybe important beyond the normal permit process. So we, we, we be able to charge for this time. So, like, myself, planning. Anytime we do something under, um, beyond what we would normally do for a developer and then the permit process. Now be able to charge for that time. Do, go have a crystal ball, know exactly what that's going to look like. Questions? This is.
This is just, this is one, really just to do the development.
Okay, we're talking about the hourly rates that we're. Okay, this is not assisted development fee, which is.
Okay, okay.
Yep, 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 yep.
I have.
Any questions or comments?
Just, just to verify, is this the, or do you do the, is this nothing to do with anybody?
The first definitely mentions, uh, their, 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 that it's required you develop. And, and that first, first, uh, out, that, 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 well, I got it first.
Any questions for comment? Hello?
No.
Okay. An application, I, I, I. Have a motion to, I don't know what your question is, this is one of the.
Beating.
Uh, kind of motion regarding, or it's 2018, it raises out on the, like, charge. Does that move? I have a second. I have a motion in a second for the, for the 2018, for all other places.
Steve Denny?
Yes.
Shane Davis?
Yes.
Robert Jones?
Jeff Ab? Hi.
And Jeff Ab?
Hi. I have a motion here. And actually, it's a problem here, in order to restore water utility, borrow money from the electric and water utilities.
Okay, so, as you know, we're, um, at the vice council, going back through the process of studying what is small water fee should look like. Going forward, there is, there is one that, there is one that exists, uh, that is our collector. So we have some very small water projects that we need to get started now. And one of them, the, the, the one is, is that they take, they give us water stream. And the other thing is that we also have to pay for the, do study from the engineering firm to look at what capital project we need to do, and then also for Baker Tilly or Solton, on what the C should be, what it could be, and then it's up to the town council what it would be below that. So, there is, because we have uncollected stormwater feeders, you know, stormwater product. And so you are allowed to borrow from a different utility, because it's going to be utility. You are allowed to borrow, and now, now, it's up to five years now, in the time period versus the old, usually a year. So that's what we're, uh, doing at this time.
This was re, until October 1st.
This is, yeah, you can do that by resolution. That, 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 maybe, you, you're killing, up, up here, here, since this is TV, it's not, I think, by resolution. You could decide from one or the other, or both. If I, they're, they're.
My, this is telling me if you want from one or the other.
Electric is what the only one I'm planning on.
Like, there's clean, because there is water, 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 and, uh, like, like, they did. Consent as well on water, but the, like, it's not on, we're going to that, as this is, we're, we're, like, the I act, the city of people who are, this is.
That sounds funny here.
I'm going to be from the library, in front of them. And Shane, this didn't need to be in the.
So it'd be a resolution, then it can be cited, and it just, it's, and then neuralized, or, or, your, your, you, it's like. But it's not, we don't, we don't just have done that.
So, uh, so, clean, you don't have an ordinance program up this.
I don't, no.
What resolution number going on?
I do not.
Okay.
I can.
This is the whole resolution, uh, authorizing, authorizing money, uh, from the electric utility to, uh, for water.
The, the last point I want to make is, listen, the worst case scenario is if we didn't have a stormwater fee to continue, if we have, we have, continue not to collect, like, stormwater fee, would, would still be able, throughout the years, to pay for this project, such as water stream and the electricity.
Is there a limit? How much can be more open?
I believe there is a limit, and it's based on, uh, cash on hand, revenue, based on revenue.
Yeah, yeah, building, all that, and, uh, that, that, this has been, this is, this is.
For, 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 like.
You have to maintain, like, like, because, like, they, they, and, 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 I'm not ready to ask for the.
And how long do they pay that? It used to be one. So there's a, I have a question. So, um, Bannon's doing the study, to look at what capital projects, and, 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 capital projects are going to need to do. And also, what's going to cost us operating a stormwater utility? Sales. Something with the street sweeper, maybe we pay for, uh, the stormwater utilities, what's collected. And, and bring all that together, come up with a dollar amount, and annual, now, and then make artillery take that, basically, certain. If you, I recommend it, user screen, and then you could, now that you have a justification, you go up to what they recommend, or, or, and, below that.
It's already started.
It's already started, and Bannon, yeah, I'll finish that out. Bannon is on, on, uh, hitting any milestones. They're supposed to have, um, the draft of the report by the next couple of days, their goal is the end of the month. Protected time for, to vote on this, presented to you in February next year.
For, this is.
Yeah. All the homework that's to get on wires, it will all come to, um, you, protected to be.
Any questions or comments? You have the, the, okay. Can I have a motion to accept it, or, or, I have an all of them named next to it, but. We, we need to make sure that we, you know, if I don't, if I don't, if I don't, if it's, so, uh, for, 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 so, can I have a motion?
Does that move?
Second.
I have a motion to second, or a resolution, or whatever, on the stormwater utility, from the electric, the utilities. We'll call it, please.
Steve Denny?
Yes.
Shane Davis?
Yes.
Robert Jones? Jeff Ab?
So, resolution, can I have a board of evil?